Okay, this is the zoning board of appeals. I am Janice Tatarka. I am joined with Will Cecchio, Hector Velez, John De Priest, Marilyn Vega Torres, Hugo Perdomo, Joseph Mahoney, Joan Cromwell, and Arthur Arsenal. So that's everybody. So I'm gonna do one thing. I'm gonna take something out of order because it's very quick and I don't feel it is the last thing on the agenda. And I don't think it's particularly fair for whoever it is to have to wait for that. So we're gonna deal with that first. 2023-12, the last item on the agenda, which is 51 Library Street, Pedro Florentino, who's looking for a request for an extension of a variance. This is something we generally do easily, you know, first time around. So does anybody have an objection to us taking this out of order? Does anybody have a motion to grant this extension?
You can only do one six-month extension.
Yeah, which is what? So which made by Arthur, seconded by Marilyn. All in favor? Aye. Done. Okay, now we'll start back at the beginning. So we're at 2024-03-63, Harvard Street, Sergio St. Lawrence, for a special permit in variance seeking approval to establish additional living space by constructing basement habitable space, relocating a rear egress addition, building a second-floor addition and porch, and extending an existing driveway which does not meet the minimum requirements for combined the side yard setbacks, minimum rear yard setbacks, and proposed parking extension within five feet of the side yard property line and within five feet of a wall containing windows and also tandem parking spaces are subject to special permit approval. We heard this last month. John, did this go to the planning board?
It did go to the planning board. The planning board both recommended approval with me.
And what? Okay, so who's here to talk about this?
That's me.
Ah, there you go, sir.
Good evening, I'm Sir Justin Lawrence, 60th and Harvard Street.
Okay, we don't have a microphone, do we?
No.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna ask you, it won't be big tape, but just speak up so everybody can hear you.
Of course.
And if I'm too loud, tell me, 'cause I've been told. So a couple of things. So you are adding a number of bedrooms on this one. So there was, as I recall, there was some, not confusion, there were some questions at our last hearing where we talked about you were adding, you're proposing to add a number of bedrooms to your bottom floor, and it seemed quite like a large number. So talk to us again about what you're proposing.
So bedrooms itself would be, it's just the title, but the room would not be used as such. The idea is to make it habitable, but use it for, currently use it in an organized way. So if the gym is downstairs, and that would be, a room would be dedicated to that itself. Another one would be for office space, and then another one is like a playroom or a way to... We would have a bed down there for my mother, which is the idea, because it steps in her well-being, but other than that, that's...
So are you planning to have closets in each of these rooms?
I think there are two that have closets.
Because that's what makes something a bedroom, is having a closet.
Yeah. So right now, one of the upstairs bedroom, we use a closet because the house is big, but closets case is very, very limited. In the pictures that I brought about in the basement, you see we have three closets down there, standing closets that we use.
Already existing?
In the basement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Those were left by previous owners, but we just use them, and then we make sense.
So you want, you're gonna partition this into how many bedrooms again?
So it'll be three rooms.
Three rooms. And again, why, and I, and I don't, and I'm sorry, but why do you need three rooms? If you could have this open area, which you can finish, and then you could have part of it be a gym and part of it have the bed for your mom, I mean, why, you're partitioning it up into separate rooms, it just, it gets, it's just a little nerve-wracking to me to think that you're putting that many bedrooms, and that potentially it could be used for Airbnb or for SRO or...
No, so there's, the house is for us, is not for anyone else to use, is not for, and to point out as well, the laundry is staying in the basement, but the entire house. So it would not make sense to Airbnb wants property and then go do laundry somewhere else. That's just... And then the bedrooms itself, as you see, we, as we were designing this space, that's what it was suggested with the architect and the three rooms itself. And the plans, they do look cohesive and they make sense.
Before I open to the public, do you guys have any other, any questions?
So when you say that the laundry room is gonna be open, it's open for everyone?
Oh, so it's, the way that I talk about it is, this is one house.
Yep.
It's one family, it's one laundry.
Okay, that's it. So it's a single-family home in your opinion?
Exactly. Yes.
Could you point in the plan where the gym, where the gym is gonna go?
So there was actually the picture of the actual gym right now, that's what we intend to keep it, because that would be the biggest room in Paris. It's also be this one right here. Yes, this one. So the gym is currently located right there, so that's where it will go.
John, did you say something in the plan, something else, 'cause that's after, right?
Is that the plan?
I mean, you gotta bear, suppose it's a bedroom, but he said that the gym instead of bed. Is that even...
It is shown as a bedroom with a closet and a window, so it, and whether it's intended for a gym or something, it still could be used as a bedroom.
And understand that, when you're, when you call it a bedroom, then you're looking for relief for parking based on that, calling that a bedroom. If it was just your gym, your home gym, that's not an issue as it relates to car parking. But as soon as you call it a bedroom, we have to look at parking issues as well.
I understand. And there's still two bedrooms?
It's one and a half ba, oh, in the, down here?
Yeah, on the, on the base.
Down in the basement, what, there's how many bedrooms, bathrooms?
Two.
So there's two here and one and a half up above. Is there anybody, this is still open to the public, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Sir, please come up here, give us your name and address, and tell us what your issues are.
Good evening, everybody. Adam Vanyo, 70 Fremont Avenue.
So you just block it?
Oh, sorry, where should I stand? Is this good? Okay. I have some issues with some of the plans that I'm looking at for Mr. St. Lawrence's residence. On page X dot four, it says existing east elevations, existing north elevation today. On A dot four, it says proposed, I'm guessing, east elevation and existing south elevation. So I guess I'm not seeing, I see existing east and proposed east, I do not see existing north and proposed north, neither do I see existing south and proposed south. I'm just looking, this is what I got from the planning department yesterday. So I don't know if those pictures are existing north, proposed north. Or south, east, east, I don't like the topic.
So where's the existing north now?
So proposed north, I don't see.
Are you making any changes on the north side?
Uh, we're only changes are, the only changes are made in the pictures, I mean, the drawings are shown, which is only one side of the house. And it's literally half of one side of the house, because the entire facade is stained as is, all of the areas are stained as is. And then the proposed here, we, portent it in a way, that it would still have the same measurements, it would not be a blockage to their view, 'cause that was one of their concerns.
Anything else, sir?
Well, if I look at A dot four, the picture it says existing south elevation, I'm thinking that must be a typo, because it looks like it's the same existing north view versus existing south view. I'm thinking, is that a typo? Is that really the existing north elevation? And it says existing south elevation, it looks like the same exact, I'm not quite sure, 'cause the front obviously has a wraparound porch, and I'm not seeing it here, other than, other than that. So I'm a little confused on the existing south elevation picture.
So like I said, the porch right up here, everything's, the only change here is this, right here. The porch, the entire property is not being touched at all.
And what is it that you're putting over there?
So this would be a small balcony in the second, in the second quarter.
Well, again, existing north elevation versus existing south elevation, I'm wondering if that was relabeled, because it looks like an existing north elevation, it looks like there's a cutout for like a patio door, and the door is somehow changed and goes to the left, but it looks like it's the same picture, just, I'm wondering if that's supposed to be proposed north elevation, where it says existing south elevation, 'cause it looks like it's the same exact picture, just what renovations added. Because I'm looking at that from my house, that's exactly what I see, and then when I see existing south elevation, that's the same picture. To me, what I'm seeing, unless I'm wrong, with the slight change of the door to the basement and some sort of slider, where the three windows are, and you see the next page where they're not there anymore, so I'm guessing, is that a typo, or is that what I will be looking at?
So you will be looking at a sliding door from your house, that's it? Because the balcony is set to, you know, reiterate, because that's something that we considered, while, you know, drawing this, is that there was no blocking, 'cause we appreciated the view from our house, so we fully appreciate the neighbors. That's it. So what you will be looking at would be a sliding door, and that's it?
If you're not, I don't think, maybe you're not quite answering that question.
What?
Existing south elevation, is that a typo to, should that say proposed north elevation is what that should be saying on page A dot four?
If that's what you're suggesting.
Is that just a typo?
I don't know. You're the only one who could answer that.
May I see that?
Well, if it's same as there.
So yes, that is a typo, and this is a proposed.
That was one of my concerns.
Well, then he needs to send a, then you need to say, if that's a typo, then you need to send us an amended plan, 'cause that has to be informed.
Another one, if I may?
Of course.
About the additional parking that he is looking for, that's all well and fine, but the retaining wall issue must be addressed. I found out last week that when dirt was being dumped in my yard, that the retaining wall is being worked on. Nobody contacted me, even though there's a permit to do it, that's all well and fine. But I found out that morning, when I saw contractors dumping tons of dirt on my property, so I asked them, "What's going on?", and they said, "Well, we're putting in a retaining wall." I said, "Oh, well, better late than never, it's been over two years to have the retaining wall put up, but there seems to be an issue with the retaining wall is where it's being proposed right now." And so I don't know if that's part of...
Do you have an issue with where they're, do you have an issue where it's being proposed?
Yeah, so what's going on right now is, he's building retaining wall in front of my retaining wall. So I'm not quite sure, the engineering aspect of that, if that's prudent, to build a retaining wall like a foot and a half away from another retaining wall. And so, but I found that last week when construction crew showed up, and I went and talked to the crew.
Yeah, yeah, no, I figured you're looking for the retaining wall.
Yes.
Is he accurate in his assumption that the retaining wall is being built close to his?
Well, there's some precedence to that. I contacted the neighbor, I sent them plans, a proposal, I got absolutely no answer. I sent them a video, when I got into, while I was going to my car, like a brick fell down the slope of his property, close to my car, obviously the car didn't get, nothing happened to it. So I initiated communication, there was absolutely no response back whatsoever. When we started with the wall, and everything has been documented, and I informed Citi Hall as well, when, the wall was proposed years ago, it was to be a continuation of the current retaining wall. We paid for, and this was with consent, because the gentleman talked to the architect, there was absolutely nothing done without permission, and at one point, they tried to change stuff, but that's something else. Then we paid for drawings, we paid the engineer, last minute, they changed it, I no longer wanted to do it in my property line if you wanted to do it in your property line. So that was another drawing in pain again. And at that point, 'cause we didn't want to have any mishaps with anyone, it's like, "Okay, I guess we'll do it in ours." When the, the permit was granted last week, I was called, really, someone called the police on the, on the contractors, and the police showed up, they saw that everything was in order, and we said, "Yeah, lunch."
Is that our issue, is that issue in front of us? The retaining wall management?
So this involves the permit that you were issued last year relative to the parking, this is not relative to parking issue that you were asking for of this permit?
So the permit that I resubmitted about a month and a half ago, is that the one that was approved and I paid for?
You submitted a request last year or some time ago to allow for two parking spaces on that site?
Yes, yes.
And with the retaining wall. Is the issue that's being discussed now relative to that permit, or is it relative to this?
Relative to this one.
Okay, yes. What, is there a retaining wall issue in front of us?
The question is asking to expand the parking space to allow two more, in addition to the two that were permitted for the previous one.
Well, the thing with the parking as is, we're now standing, and it is difficult. I mean, we do have the space in the back, and so we want to park the cars side by side, as opposed to take one, so to take the other one out.
No, I just wanna be, I wanna understand, if he's building something that's related to a prior permit, and he's building that in accordance with that prior permit, then that's not in front of us at this point.
And that's what I'm trying to...
Right, that's what we're trying to figure out, because if that's the case, that's not what we're hearing. And your point can be legit, but it's not what we're hearing right now. We're hearing whether or not, so if you have an existing retaining wall proposed, and you're working on it, and now you're asking for more parking, you know, that's gonna be, what's the status of the retaining wall that we've already approved? If you're asking for changes in the retaining wall that were previously approved, then that should be in front of us.
To answer that, the retaining wall that was originally proposed did not get built because of the differences that arose after that. That's why a new proposal to the wall was submitted.
But we don't have a, do we have a retaining wall in front of us? I'm looking, I'm just trying to see.
It was not called out, because it was asked for additional parking space.
So in other words, we would, if we're gonna give additional parking space, we should go, I'm confused as to what is going on here relative to the retaining wall, it's something that should be in front of us now for us to approve as part of this proposal.
You're not, you're not looking at the retaining wall per se, we're not approving the retaining wall per se, we're...
Approving is the parking.
It's the parking, and if that parking involves a new retaining wall, then yes.
Then we could talk about it without, where specifically having it called out, and then, all right, all right, thank you. So what then, but then you shouldn't be building it. I mean, it's a catch-22. Either you're building something that you currently don't have a permit for, and you're asking for now, if you, if you gotta, if you're building off the previous permit, then you gotta build what the previous permit talked about, not what you're proposing now, is what I'm saying. If, so you shouldn't be building it and asking, you shouldn't be coming here saying, "I wanna do this now," and building it if you're not building it based on a prior approval. Am I, I mean, I'm probably talking in circles, but I'm...
No, you do make sense, and thank you for clarifying. So my question is, what was approved two weeks ago?
It's your job to know. Oh, two, well, I don't know what was approved two weeks ago.
That's the, I paid $130 for a permit for a retaining wall.
Right, and it was under the assumption that you were building a retaining wall that you were approved at the last permit?
The, the plans were drawn differently, it was a different pass.
They shouldn't have had...
They should not have...
But what?
So what? So yes, we were building because we've got a permit, we didn't go to the end.
You were acting under the assumption that you had valid permit. Is that what you're saying? You were acting under the assumption that you had been approved to do what you're doing?
I was acting on, yes, assumption that the retaining wall, which is the last permit that I submitted, was approved.
And that was what your license, that the permit that you received two weeks ago says?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? 'Cause I think right now they've sort of retained wall issues outside of our burden, and I, I think that you can't, that's an argument you're gonna have to have with him about, I'm gonna bill him, I'm sorry.
Well, it would be prudent if it's courtesy of neighbors abutting each other, that the person doing the construction would give due notice to the opposing abutter, that when construction is going on, just not that somebody shows up and starts dumping dirt in your yard, is the first inkling that you find out.
Yeah, I know, but we're not, we're not even rude, we're not polite.
Exactly, politeness doesn't necessarily have to be mandatory. I appreciate that.
We often ask people to confer with their neighbors, but...
It would be nice in the real world, and you know, since it's over two years ago when this retaining wall issue came up and nothing's been done, the gentleman has a driveway, which is great, but provided that the retaining wall should have been done, and it wasn't done, I offered to give him money toward it, and then I never heard anything again. And then, when I finally talked to him, when I saw him again, he said that, "I feel uncomfortable, please don't talk to me."
But let's, okay, let's just talk, let's continue, if you have any other issues related to this permit, I'm sorry.
So getting back to that permit and the additional driveway issue, that if is pending, which is part of this, I believe...
Do you have concerns about what he's proposing for parking?
I do, based upon the retaining wall, if the retaining wall is putting correctly. And that seems to be an issue with the city right now with the retaining wall. So there's a stop work order on it right now, is what I understand. And so there's obviously an issue, so...
Yes, that's not our, yeah, so that's not within our...
Agreed, but if he's looking for additional parking, that would have to be part of additional parking to have a retaining wall. And so that's how, it gets confusing with two years ago versus now with the additional parking. I just need clarification on the plans on this retaining wall, if he's getting additional parking, what's going on with it? And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anybody else who has issues to speak on this? Okay, I'm gonna close the public participation portion. John, can you clarify anything of what was just discussed here, and what is in the purview of the board right now to think of that?
The, yeah, the permit that's been issued by the building department, so if they act on that, if there's an issue with that, you'll have to, the abutter will have to talk with the...
But that's beyond our scope at the moment. What is the planning board's, the planning department's view on this?
Planning department has concern with the number of bedrooms there, and what is the, what will be the use of them down the road? If they're permitted as bedrooms, they could be used as bedrooms.
Can we put, if we approve this, can we, then we have to go through the variance issues too, though. Can we approve, if we approve this, could we limit to make sure that there's no rental of it, no individual rental of rooms, no, you know, no daily rental, no rental of any kind, other than as a whole?
The board usually puts a condition on there of no, if it's a rental, they usually put a 12-month limit on it, you know, nothing less than 12 months, but you do have the right to put a condition of no rental at all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, if somebody wants to rent the whole house out, then they can rent the whole house out, that's, you know, weekly, if they wanna rent to a family or something. But my concern would be more about being able to rent the room, you know, so it's not used as a single rental. So that, so it's not really the 12 months, that's, it's much more than no daily rental, no separate rental of each particular bedroom. All right, any thoughts before I even go through the variance stuff, guys? John, do we have the requirements for variance? Thank you. Okay, now, when they answer these, everyone has to be yes, or we can't approve it, we have a lot of, we have a lot of flexibility in special permits, we have no flexibility on variances, you have to, the state law requires that you have to answer yes, be able to validly answer yes, that we agreed to for all four criteria. So the first one, the variances sought, now, first, John, we're looking, all right, and we're looking for variances for, so that we're clear. Yard setbacks, right?
Yes.
We're looking for variances because of rear yard setbacks and side yard setbacks and five feet within the wall, those are what we're looking for.
The property is a special permit.
Well, that's a special permit, okay. So we're looking for, combined yard setback, rear yard setback?
Combined yard setback.
Just the combined yard setback? Okay, so that's the one we're looking for, the combined yard setback has to be right here.
And the R1 district, the setback on both sides has to be a minimum of 20 feet. In this case, it's 18 and a half.
The variance is sought because of the soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such lands or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. So is there something about the shape of this building or this land that says you can't have a 20-yard setback? Do you have to be able to tell us? If you can't tell us, then we...
It's the shape of the lot or the building, or the topography of the lot, or something peculiar to the soils. That's hard to know, no.
Then don't say no, 'cause then we can't give it to you. I'm telling you, it's a variance, you have to answer yes to all of them. If you can't come up with a reason why, then we can't give you this permit. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not telling you what to say, I'm telling you, you have to logically look at what that says and tell us, "Geez, I can't make it 20 feet because I don't have 20 feet to put in, my building's already there, I'm standing at the site, I'm not extending the building, so I can't make it less than 20 feet, 'cause I'd have to chop the building in half and a foot and a half." I mean, only you can tell us that. Are you proposing an extension on that part of the building where the rear yard setback is? Are you proposing an extension in the rear of the building?
And the rear, we're eliminating, well, cutting down the steps, and so there will be a rear distance to allow forward feet.
So what you're, are you saying to me that we can't have 20 feet there because the building is the building, we're not adding to the building? The end of the building is here, it's 18 and a half feet to here, there's nothing we can do about that, because the building, we're not adding to the building and creating the problem?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we believe that? Yes, no, whatever? I mean, you're the one who was to tell me that, if you can't, I mean, so if the build, so, again, clarify, here's the, here's the back of the building, you're supposed to have 20 feet.
Mm-hmm.
No?
The side yard.
I'm sorry, the side yard of the building. Well, there, thank you for clarifying. So it's the side yard has to be 20 feet. Are you extending anything on the sides of the building, or is the building staying in the footprint that it's in?
The building is staying in the footprint that it's in.
So therefore, it's the shape of the building that basically says you can't, it's the shape, the particular shape of this building says you can't have a 20-yard setback.
Correct, yes.
And so he's not adding anything on the side, are you clear about that? Okay. Being, that being said...
Okay, what are you saying?
Okay, what I'm saying is that he, the only way that he can say that that works is he can't have a 20-yard setback, because right now there's only 18 and a half feet, and he's not adding anything to the building to make that problem worse. So it is what, it is the size of the building, so, and that's based on the shape of the structure, that he can't make that. Yes, yes. Arthur, yes or no?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, you're not, actually.
Sorry.
It's just you, Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Delo, and you, Dex.
A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to you. What's the hardship? What, yeah, you say you can't fly?
Of course, the hardship itself is that we're trying to make it accessible for my mother. And ultimately, we don't want to relocate and find it on the property just because we don't have the accessibility to make it look hurt.
Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is usually the easy one.
There's no detriment to the public.
Nobody's gonna inherit?
No.
And last, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intended... And last, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
It will be done as it would be said.
So, yes, like...
Yes.
It's not taking, it's residential and state residential. Okay, so you met those. That doesn't mean you're approved yet. At least I had to make sure you cut through all of those. Okay, so let's talk about it. What would the conditions the planning board recommend to John?
Standing conditions applicable, residents in the building should not be eligible to participate in the city's on-street parking sticker program. That has to replace all these foundational documents. And the use of permeable pairs for the driveway.
And, and I would, if we're going to do that, I would want to add, no daily rentals or sub...
Short-term, short-term.
Sure, no short-term rentals of any kind. Or days... No individual room, no individual room rentals.
If I may, to clarify, would this mean that we would not be eligible for residence sticker?
You can't give me those. If you ask for parking relief, you can't get a residence sticker.
Well...
That's, and that's outside of ours.
Because the access of being a Chelsea resident, the accessibility of being in town, it just gets quarrelled significantly.
Well, I mean, you can't park at night. You can't park anytime during the day. The permit is just for at night.
I know, but like, perhaps, I mean, if you see the hall, there's no parking.
But it's, it's 2 o'clock. Isn't the permit started at 2:00 in the morning?
Depending on the year.
So, I mean, that's what, basically, you can't park on the street at night.
Anyway, anyway. Oh, that's fine.
Right, so I mean, because that, and that's just the law. The Chelsea City Council said that when it comes to, if you want a permit, if you want a relief on the parking, then you can't participate in the parking program.
Would this take effect after it's being constructed or before, once it's granted? Because like, wherever you're going to park the car as well, we construct this.
Once your permit is, once we write up the decision and it's filed with the city clerk and no appeal, or if an appeal is taken and it's addressed, it becomes effective.
Yeah, but he's, but I mean, what, you know, if it's being constructed, what if he has no other choice? What works?
The permit goes into effect once the decision is filed with the city clerk and a 20-day appeal period that's expired or an appeal has been addressed.
So...
So, yes, it will, it will occur when you're on construction.
Okay.
Any thoughts, comments, recommendations? Proposals? Question vote? Somebody's going to make a motion. Somebody's going to make a motion. Everything we have to move it, somebody has to make it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve case number 2024-3, 63 Harvard Street, Rogio San Morre, for special permit and variance seeking approval with the conditions that articulate, John articulated.
Second? Somebody has to second. That doesn't mean you have to vote for it. Somebody has to second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? No?
No.
No? Joe?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Does he need four or three?
He needs four.
Then you're not going to get it. Because either way, no matter what I say, you're not going to get four. So you can make what you can propose to do now. Can we give him a chance to withdraw?
You've already done the vote.
And we won't be able to, sorry, you're not going to get it. Because we don't have, we need, you need four votes. So you can talk to them about what your next step, sorry.
So the vote was two and two?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's not enough.
The vote's... Sorry?
Thank you, sir.
The next case is 202404, 68 Broadway, Dina Fernandez, for special permit seeking approval to establish a barber shop and beauty salon. John, this also went to the planning board. What do they have to say?
They recommend approval with standard conditions, including assignment plan.
You have to go with what they, well, by assignment plan, you know what that means? Like you would need to submit to the planning department what your proposed signs would look like. And I'm going to open this to the public. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. Thoughts? John, planning department's thoughts?
Planning department has no comment.
Yeah, so it's basically, you just need to, you know, they need to present a sign proposal. So that would be the condition, what are the conditions that you would propose for this, John?
So that the planning board, or their special, that, standing conditions applicable in the...
The signage.
You submit my partner that signage plan, showing up with signs, exterior signage.
Yeah. You good with that? Yeah, okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve case number 2024-4, 688 Broadway, Dina Fernandez.
Okay, so this is everybody except Arthur. All in favor?
Aye.
Joan, you're on this one too. Okay, all right, good.
Thank you.
Seconded by, seconded by Joe. The next case is 202405, 222 Webster Ave, Paolo Evangelista. We have a request to continue this to June. May I have a motion to continue this to June? Made by Mike Ugo and seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one, 202406, 34 Pembroke Street, Balam Realty LLC. Special permit variance seeking approval to expand this structure by building a roof deck which does not meet the minimum requirements for side yard setback, rear yard setback, combined side yard setback. John, what does the planning board have, the planning board have to say about this?
Planning board recommended approval with standard conditions, including no grills and no umbrellas on the roof.
Which is our standard conditions with Contra. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. Questions before I raise the issue of the variances? We're going to have to go through that. Okay, variances. You've already know the story. You had to cut yes to everyone. The variance is sought because of soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district of which it is located.
So this is, as we said, a non-conformant building that only has a tiny shaded rear yard ordering adjacent property and surrounded by an eight-foot fence. On the roof, it has unobstructed water views from the top level. Roof access is already existing, the deck would be around that existing headout.
So it's based on the condition of the current building?
Yes. Same limits of the site.
Joan, you too, you're on this one. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, for the petitioner or applicant.
The home is bound by a street on one side and by homes on two sides. Access to the views in any open space or amenities would dramatically increase the appeal value of the property.
So the aesthetic hardship.
Yes.
Desirable relief may be granted without, what?
Sorry. Commented that that is a stretch.
That's a stretch.
For...
But it's also...
The, the top.
Yeah, well, I think it's, well, I think, I'm willing to, I think the board is deciding. A hard, well, it seems to me to live there.
That's a hardship, financial or otherwise.
It does say otherwise. He went with otherwise. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial, we take this very seriously. It's just for this particular situation. It's sort of weird. You're on the top of the, you're on the roof and it's kind of hard to figure out.
Understood.
You know, it's like, is there a...
Do a lot of these, I totally agree.
Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
The addition of a formal roof deck would constrain and make roof usage safe without blocking surrounding views. Deck would only be visible from the ground on one side.
Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Roof deck does not change the non-conforming proximity to lot lines and is within height restrictions and keeping with adjacent decks.
John, do you have any recommendations? Does the planning department have recommendations on this?
Just those recommended by the planning board, with standard conditions applicable and no gross, no gross.
And how high is your fence going to be? We talked about this before, how, how...
Forty-two inch.
Oh, go ahead, you did talk about it.
Hours of operation, you know, hours of usage.
There were some concerns earlier. Yeah.
We spoke to the neighbor after the original meeting when we explained that it was just for the residents there and...
It's rental, it's not condos.
Like management, whoever manages the property will implement hours of usage there. That do not have a negative impact. Exactly.
Was no kids allowed, adult. No kids allowed, yes.
With no...
Yeah, kids, I could be a company by adults, yeah.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Case 2024-06, 34 Pembroke Street, for special permit variance seeking approval to expand the structure of building or deck for the special conditions for the... Which measure would it...
Which we are, the conditions we are taking. All in fa, uh, second? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one's 202407, 106 Webster Ave, Hector Lopez, for special permit variance seeking approval to construct a rear addition to create three additional bedrooms which do not meet the minimum requirements for off-street parking and side-street setback. We will not be deciding this today. This will go to the planning board on the 28th of May. On the 28th of May, and you have, are you paying attention, sir? Oh, well, do we need some help? Oh, okay, we are, what'd you say? He needs an interpreter. Okay, no problem. No problem. Have him join us. Okay.
He has someone that's been with him, but one person stepped out.
Would you like us to wait for them?
He still want to help him pay him out.
Okay, then we'll wait. We'll, we'll, we'll take you out of order. We'll go to the next one, okay? 202408, 43 Everdale, Juan Portillo, for special permit seeking approval to establish a convenience store. And again, okay, so we're not going to decide this today. This goes to the planning board on May 28. And that will be in the city council chambers. And then you come back to the zoning board on June 11. Also in the chambers. Tell us what you're proposing, sir.
We just want to put basic stuff, just with kids, snacks, candies, stuff like that.
What's there now?
I have a photography studio right now.
And it's your, yeah, it's you own? What are your hours of operation?
Normally open at 8:00.
Close?
Cierre? Six p.m. Is it, is it going to keep, just, what do you, and add these to the convenience store? It's kind of two spaces, exactly what's on the bottom, the other one is up, it's like, and the studio just take pictures for passport and stuff like that.
And that's upstairs?
Yes, was that leaving? No, no. Everything, everything is on the same floor, pretty much. It's one place right here, per se, part of it, and the other one, secondary.
So you're, he's basically adding a convenience store to the current operation?
So the snack, I'm going to keep it up front. Then I'm going to have a way through to the studio on the back.
So I guess what I'm trying to clarify, John, are they going to be two businesses or one business?
It just depends the way you want to do it, Anthony. See, it either be only one or divided.
Well, you asked for one business here, so that, I mean, if, if you want to have a convenience store that part of what you do is take pictures, you know, for passports, that, you have to just tell us that.
The application that I did, Anthony, has pretty much explained that I wanted to have, that I have the studio and I would put a, the candy store on the same place.
So you want to expand, well, I'm, that is...
That is the convenience part to his...
To his current business, exactly, right. And that's, I mean, that's what we want to be sure of, that it's not two businesses you're asking for.
No, no.
So he's going to manage the whole entire store? So it's going to manage it as one, as a business, yes?
The studio is not a place that a lot of people come. It's just, it's just a few jobs.
It's a service, it's provided, it's a convenience store. And probably said... So we want to have, we want to see a sign that says that's what you do in the back too. The sign would have to say, and we take pictures. I'm going to open this to the public. Does there anybody have any comments before I do that? Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? This will not be the only opportunity because this will stay open. Okay, there are not, there's no one here to speak on this. You need to go to the planning board on June 28, May 28, and back to us on July, on June 11.
June 11, is it?
June 11. Okay, okay. Mr. Lopez, is your, is somebody here to help you?
Lopez.
Ah, here we go.
How are you doing? I'm sorry, I was drinking my meditation for a year.
That's going right. That's going right. We took care of that. I think we're all set then now because I can translate for you. Thank you. So again, I'm going to start from the beginning. 202407, for special permit and variance seeking approval to construct a rear addition to create three additional bedrooms which does not meet the minimum requirements for off-street parking and side yard setback. So that's what he said. This will, this, we will not be deciding this today.
Okay.
Because this will go to the planning board on the 28th of May. You have to go and present this on the 28th of May.
Okay, okay.
And then come, come back to us on June 11. And both of those meetings will be in the back in the city hall chamber, the council chamber, okay?
All right.
So, number one, so that's what. The other thing that it's important for you to recognize is you're, you need a variance. So there are four conditions that need to be met for variance. And you should talk to John about what those are because you need to answer yes to all of those for us to be able to actually approve this. Could you please give us your name for the record? I'm sorry.
My name is Nelson.
Full name, please.
Argueta, A-R-G-U-E-T-A.
And, and where do you live?
I live in Boston.
Okay.
We're not going to be deciding this today anyway. But, any other... Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Okay, I'm not closing the public participation portion of this. Any other questions before we send this off to the planning? So, planning board, May 28th, City Hall. zoning board, June 11th, City Hall. You've got to come back, okay? And be clearer about what you're proposing. I mean, your plans are okay, it's just it's clear, it's kind of confusing as to what you're proposing in the back and what you're not proposing.
Correct. I think you probably are missing the one from the second floor, the present press room.
Well, if there's something missing, then you need to get it to them right away. I mean, there's something that is an existing second floor, I mean, I think it's here, existing third floor. It's just, you know, their proposed plans are here. It's just it looks like from these plans, the only room that you're planning to expand is on the third floor. That's what it looks like from these plans. And the place in where you're expanding over the third floor, underneath that, you're going to have steps that go from the second to the third. First to the second, second to the third. Do I miss this one? Any other thoughts? John, any? No, all right. Next week, next, so 28th, zoning planning board, back here next month.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is 2024-09-284 Eastern Avenue, Energizer Storage LLC, for special permit in variance, seeking approval for construction of that of storage structure, which does not meet the minimum requirements for front yard sit-down, off-street parking, and maximum requirement for maximum height. And for special permit for major commercial projects. So again, this is the first time we're hearing it, we won't be deciding it today, and we have a request, or we have a request, or we have a request to move this until August. So in that, in order to do that, which we appreciate, you will need to submit an email tomorrow to John Waite, extending the, waiving the hundred day period. To get back to him tomorrow, we appreciate that. So, well, do agree, do do that? Do Waite meet in August? Waite told August to meet this. Are you okay with that?
Yes. If you agree to waive the hundred day statutory period until August.
Yes.
Correct.
So that was, okay. Okay, so why don't you talk to us about this and what you're proposing?
Sure. We have a small presentation, just a little bit about us. And thank you for having me.
If anybody wants to see it, they can come around this side and see it.
Yeah, if it's helpful, I can stand up or...
That's all right.
Okay. Yeah, we could advance the slide. Just going to talk this evening a little...
All names and addresses, please.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Ford, for Briar Spring Grove, Orleans, Massachusetts.
Alexander Mathis, 2101 Pearl Street, Boulder, Colorado.
Brett Cullen, and 2101 Pearl Street, Boulder, Colorado.
So just going to talk a little bit about us, the need for energy storage locally in Chelsea and throughout the state and country, provide some overview and updates on the project, and talk about safety. You can go to the next slide. First, just also want to thank everyone here from Labor, and also chief from the fire department, appreciate the participation. Also, IDEW and the carpenters as well, thank you. A little bit about who we are, we're Flatiron Energy. We have offices in Boston, York City, Boulder, just to give you a little bit of idea where we are geographically. The team has been developing clean energy projects for all of their careers, renewables, energy storage, throughout our lives. And Flatiron is really about developing clean energy infrastructure that can do a couple things. One is provide a lot of benefits to the local community from an economic and an environmental perspective, and more broadly, helping to address climate change and to better the overall environment which we work in. A lot of our projects that we're doing are focused in urban and industrial areas that have an opportunity to improve. We're a certified B Corp. What that means is that's a certification that we hold, a rec, that really recognizes our company about doing the right thing. So there's a lot of metrics that we record and file, and really gives us recognition for our governance, our community involvement, our stakeholder involvement, and just working with people fairly and equitably during the development process. A little bit more about what we do. We build large grid-scale energy storage projects that connect into the transmission system and benefit local communities. We really focus on underdeveloped, underutilized industrial spaces that can benefit from new infrastructure going into that area. And a couple of things it does is energy storage provides a reliability component. As the power sources change in the state, particularly in Boston and in these areas where there's a lot of load, it provides a lot of reliability and resiliency as the power system shifts from predominantly energy that's produced by fossil fuels to energy that's produced by renewables. Mainly in this area is solar and wind, and particularly offshore wind. And lastly, what we focus on a lot is the site improvements to the area, how we can improve an area physically. We can, you know, improve it with infrastructure, roads, curves, and most importantly, a lot of the environmental benefits, planting new trees, planting a greenery, shading, areas for the public to use. So specifically, you know, what we've been doing in Chelsea, and first of all, a big thank you to everybody that I've been working with, the people I've worked with, and the community-based organizations. The city have been phenomenal. But a lot of stakeholder engagement to understand how this project can benefit the local community, and how we can build it the right way. So we spend a lot of time with community-based organizations, a lot of times with butters, with neighbors, and other groups that are in the area of Eastern Avenue, especially the schools. We have a pretty significant pilot agreement, so payment in lieu of taxes. So the tax base of this property will go up very significantly and probably be one of Chelsea's largest taxpayers. And we also have a host community agreement that we proposed, which is about over a half a million dollars a year, that would go into workforce training for high school to young adult and professionals, that it's focused on real hard skills, skills like HVAC, electricity, electricians, and those type of things. So we've been working real hard with some of the community-based organizations, with the city manager and other folks on how to structure that and implement that. We still have a fair ways to go, we're taking a lot of feedback and a lot of input from folks, but I think that's something that could really, you know, really benefit. And our goal ideally would be, you know, folks that would be part of these training programs could actually work on the project at some point in the future. We'll be putting together a construction management plan, which will detail how we'll construct the project, when we will, where it will work. As we talked about with the support of using labor, we plan on this being a union project, obviously observing, addressing, you know, school hours, traffic, all those things. So we'll be putting that together. We've been working with the fire chief a lot around just emergency response plans, training for the fire department. We do recognize this is, you know, this is electrical infrastructure, you know, it's very safe and it's very reliable, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're fully transparent with the city as well as first responders, and how to deal with these types of, how to deal with the type of technology. Lastly, I'd just say, kind of, you know, I think, we like to think about this as an opportunity, there's a, you know, significant development opportunity for the city, and we think there's an opportunity to, you know, parallel that with improving the community at the same time. A little bit about energy storage, and I'll try and keep it at a pretty high level, but this project, this project will take energy off of the grid at certain periods of time, will store it in batteries, will hold that energy, and then will discharge it later. I think it's, you know, a good way to think about it, you know, kind of a physical analogy is if you think about like a water tower that you see. That water gets pumped up at night when a lot of water is not being used, and then, you know, in the morning when everyone wakes up, you know, takes their showers, does their laundry, washes their clothes, that water is dispersed to the neighborhood. So, at a high level, you could think about it like that. There's periods of time when energy is produced and it's not needed, particularly when renewables, offshore wind, solar are overproducing. So we're able to store that energy, and then we're able to discharge it back to the grid when the energy's needed. So particularly, you know, winter, summer, hot days in the afternoon, when HVAC is running, businesses are running, stores are open, so we're able to discharge that energy back onto the grid. So I also like to think about it as a little bit of like a shock absorber for the grid, where we're able to, you know, kind of balance things out. More specific to Massachusetts and Chelsea, there are a number of fossil fuel power plants coming offline, specifically like the Mystic Plants, which they produce power for thousands and thousands of homes and businesses. And there's a number of other plants that are having issues with winter starts. You may have seen some of this, like during the polar vortexes and some of those things, where power, gas power plants or oil-fired power plants haven't been able to come online due to a number of issues, either fuel availability or just the reliability of the plant. A lot of these plants are very old, they were built in the 50s or 60s. Where energy storage is available immediately and can, you know, discharge large amounts of energy for a number of hours and provide a good resource for that. And lastly, as I said, there are a number of very significant renewable resources that are going to be coming into New England, which is great. I think a lot of you have probably heard about the offshore wind turbines. The only challenge with those is they produce electricity intermittently, and that sometimes is when it's needed and sometimes when it's not. So the ability to really enable and have those renewables be maximized is a big part of why we're doing energy storage. This is just an overview, kind of locally. This is a view of Chelsea on the screen, you can see the Chelsea Creek. But those red and yellow and green lines are all the distribution lines that feed, you know, the homes and businesses of Chelsea. That large purple line that kind of cuts across the picture is the transmission system that runs through Chelsea, goes along the MBTA tracks. Our project's almost about in the middle, but as you can see, the energy storage system's going to kind of be in the heart of Chelsea, and the ability to distribute energy along the transmission system, which gets stepped down and goes to all the homes and businesses of Chelsea. So just a little bit on the project and a few updates. For everyone, the project is at 284 Eastern Avenue. Right now, that's the home of LTI Museum. It's that green shading, just to set up and show folks. Yeah, right here is the, is the property. This is the transmission line that I mentioned. These are the MBTA tracks here. This is Eastern Avenue and Willoughby Street, just for some points of reference. The scrub it up car wash is up here by the intersection. This is a UPS sorting facility. And the project will connect into the Eversource substation here, so there'll be a line that runs under the ground and connects into that substation. The project is about 3.7 acres of land. Building footprint will be about 50,000 square feet. It is zoned industrial, as I think everyone knows, that area along Eastern Avenue is a very, you know, kind of industrial area with different businesses. Just kind of where we are in the project, we have an option to purchase the land. We have gone through our interconnection agreements with Eversource and ISO New England. We have completed all of our interconnection agreements, which is a, you know, binding agreement that allows, would allow us to charge and discharge the battery. This is a layout of what the building that would house the batteries would look like. This is kind of superimposed on the existing site. There would be two stories to the building. Each story is about 20 feet. The building's three feet above grade, so the building would be about 53 feet high. As you can see, it quarters Eastern and Willoughby. Building would be a concrete-to-seal building, we'll show you some renderings of it, with batteries and the balance of plant equipment to run the facility. Here's a few renderings of what the building would look like. As you can see, you know, we're really trying to, you know, develop something that will, you know, really look good and, you know, meet the needs. The building would be concrete, as I mentioned, there'd be a couple access points. We're working on our, we're working on our landscaping plan. As you can see, we're going to try and put, you know, as many trees, as many bushes and those type of things along Eastern Avenue and surrounding the property. We're working with some folks that have done a fair amount of work on Eastern Avenue land in Chelsea before. These are just some different, different views of the, of the building and what it would look like. This is along Eastern Avenue, and if you were looking down, Willoughby Street. This is another shot from the back of Willoughby Street of what the building would look like. And then, this is if you were almost on the, on the MBTA tracks, looking back at Eastern Avenue. You can see the building there, and you can see on the left some balance of plant equipment, mainly where the, all of the wires and lines and communication equipment would come into that fenced area, and then that would go underground and connect into the Eversource substation that's at the end of Willoughby Street. Just a little bit about safety. So the project will house a number of PMI on batteries, the same things that are in your cell phones and your laptops. Difference, you know, with these batteries and with these projects is we go through a very significant design effort to make sure that these systems are designed. We work with a number of experts in the field, as well as different standards organizations that certify the components and the building at various levels as we go through the process. We also spend a lot of time on construction and commissioning. We're working with some of the best in the engineering, pyramid construction firms in the country that have built a number of these projects, have also fixed a number of them. So very rigorous focus on quality and making sure we're working with the right trained, capable teams to build these projects. One of the things that we're also working on with the fire department is developing an emergency response plan. So that would be if there is an incident at the site, the various ways to respond to that incident. And there will also be a third-party consultant working with the fire department, who will be reviewing all of our plans that we submit, so the fire department and city will have access to an independent consultant to review all of our designs, all of our procedures. And then, the last thing is really just kind of the long-term operations. Project will be operated and brought to 35 years. There's very sophisticated telemetry and monitoring of the, of the energy storage system, so we'll have, you know, a very real-time understanding of how it's performing, and if there's any anomalies. We'll have resources that are available to respond to incidents at the facility, and also working hand-in-hand with the fire department. And just, you know, this is more, more detail, I touched on some of this before, but really working with the best in class, fire protection engineers and safety engineers. We've been working with Fire Risk Alliance. They've been involved in the development of many energy storage projects throughout the world. They've also been involved in group cause analysis of some of the incidents, and they also work on some of the different standard boards that I mentioned. The project, as you saw in the drawing of the building, there'll be basically like compartments or rooms, so there'll be a certain number of batteries in a compartment. Those will be thick concrete walls, and the reason for that is to have an ability to, if there is an incident with one battery, we can isolate it for that particular room, and it will not, you know, if there's any incidents, they won't spread or move to another part of the building. So a lot of built-in design safety. And then working with NFPA on the appropriate ventilation systems, if there's any incidents with gases or pressure in the building, and full sprinkler systems throughout the building to protect the structure and mitigate heat. So really, you know, the way we like to think about it is there's multiple layers of protection within a building, and each one of those is something that is either built into the design or built into the operation of the building. Happy to take any comments or questions?
If you have a question? Go ahead, Carolyn. You said that the batteries are contained in compartments. How many batteries per compartment?
There's two configurations that we have, one that has...
Can you voice up just a little bit?
Oh, sorry. We have two different configurations that are mirrored between the first floor and the second floors that are identical, going off the shown in the plans that we submitted. I don't remember the exact number offhand, but each of those rectangles that you're seeing will be stacked three high, so it's three times those rectangles that are shown there.
And just so I understand, so if there's like a city power outage, should this be like the backup generator? Or how is this electricity going to be used? How is this power going to be used?
Yeah, so it is, I would not characterize it as a backup generator. It is used at the transmission system level.
Eversource decides where it goes.
Ixso decides where it goes.
Yep, yep. But it is a resource that they will have the opportunity to utilize in any type of brownout, blackout, but it's really, as you said, procedurally and operationally, they make the decisions of what gets used and how. But you also are where it's located.
So Chelsea would be a priority?
Yes. You're locationally advantaged.
Yeah, you can't speak for Ixso.
No, you cannot speak for us.
No, Ixso decides where it goes. It could go anywhere.
Yep.
Will there be staff there, like stationed there, or...
So there will not be people there, 24/7, will monitor the system remotely. We will have O and M technicians and staff that will visit the site for planned maintenance and reactive maintenance. We have talk to the city, about a liaison or a person that would, we would work with to educate people about the project, and also, you know, provide people with updates, you know, if there's, if there's an incident or changes or those type of things, someone that could work with the community and provide outreach and those type of things.
No, I would just say that customarily, we also, as a part of our operating procedures, we have a two-hour onsite response time that we have as well. So even though there's nobody actually on site, somebody can show up in two hours. And effectively, immediately, there's somebody available for technical resources, like virtual
How many parking spaces is the site?
So right now, I believe in the plans, there's four parking spaces proposed.
How many?
Four.
What about the, this plan that shows, I would say to the back, it shows a line of parking spaces? And this plan there shows a lot there, like over here?
Oh, that's the...
Parking spaces?
That is the existing plan.
Oh, that's what exists?
Yeah, so that is the, I believe that's the office or the existing site. So the proposed plans are in the civil design package as part of that.
And again, staff, the most, you don't see any permanent staff on site, you would just only have O and M folks who would come on regular basis.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's not intended to be occupied.
How about security? If we have all that, no one's going to be there, I guess we guys will have security.
Yeah, sure. So we will have both passive and active systems, so there will be a perimeter fence around it, access to the building will be controlled through badges and cards, security cameras as well to monitor the site, and working with local first responders, and that will be detailed in the emergency response plan, its physical security concerns, how to respond to an event with that.
So this site will need a gate?
So there is, there is gates proposed on both the Eastern Avenue and the Willoughby, which is the main vehicle entrance. There will be security gates at those locations, and then a perimeter fence around that as well.
And the energy is AC, they're going to convert to DC?
Correct.
And then convert it to AC again?
Yep.
Joe?
We're just the king of any household appliances, you know, DC power.
And this will only serve Chelsea?
It will serve ISO New England, Eversource's transmission system.
And so there's this, there's this hidden place in Holyoke or someplace called the ISO, and they get all this energy and they decide where it goes in the entire northeast grid. And they decide it, we don't. So just, you know, it doesn't matter where it's generated, they make the decision. But, I mean, their job is to, like, if something's breaking down, to make sure it gets the energy it needs, and it's, it's not really, they're not going to be looking at Chelsea as a priority. And not, I mean, unless Chelsea needed it, unless Chelsea was a priority.
Joe?
So you store the electricity, the power?
Yep.
And then you sell it to the various vendors, Eversource, what have you? So it's a floating market?
Correct. There's, there's the wholesale energy market, and that is for projects like this, or the , it's the power plant, so...
It's like Eversource when they go out every so often to deposit.
Exactly. Yep, so there's the wholesale market, prices are changing every day, moving around, up and down, depending upon the weather, demand, and those type of things. And then there's the retail level, which, like, you and I pay our electric bill, and that's because Eversource, her national grid goes out and buys a big chunk of it for a number of years, and then they levelize that across our, our bills as ratepayers.
So I want to clarify again, and I think you said this, but I missed it. So these are not days each, like, if something happens to one battery, one, is it, it's not going to, like, have a cascading effect, is it going to just stop? Is that battery going to quit working and then it won't make a problem with the rest of the facility?
Yeah, so that's part of the standards that we have to comply with, is that one battery failure essentially can be controlled by VMS. There's systems layered over the top. Oh, sorry, battery management. Oh, sorry, the battery management system technologies. There's systems that will sit over the top from a supervisory perspective and a system level control. But if an individual cell or a module within it has an issue, it'll be disconnected.
Like your own life cell?
Right.
Yes, exactly. It's in our convention.
I think a really good parallel is like a server farm and a server rack. Like Google has a data center that's filled with a bunch of servers. And if they have an issue with one or two of those, right, they'll, they'll shut them down and then they'll keep going. So in that instance, we go to the process of saying, okay, well, these, these battery racks need to be checked, repaired, or replaced, you know, so that's when the O and M crews will come out. So the idea is that it's like very distributed within that energy storage system.
Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public. There, there seem like there are a lot of people here who want to speak, and I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. But if you do, please keep it to two minutes, okay? So is there anybody, and again, this will not be the only chance one has to speak. They'll be back in front of us in August. Jonathan, they, so do they have to go to the planning board in May still?
They will to the planning board on May 28th.
Okay, so it's May 28th, and then they'll be back here. And what's the August date?
23rd?
No, no.
13th.
13th, we're the second, we're the second Tuesday. So August 13th. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? Please give your name and address, sir.
Hector Rivera, this is right with the carpenters' union. And I just want to say congratulations, good presentation. On behalf of all the union carpenters who live in the city of Chelsea, we are in support of this project. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, I'm not going to add a name. Oh, go ahead, sir. Name and address please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Benton. I'm a business agent for Local 103 Electrician Union. I represent 8,000 members and approximately 65 members in Chelsea. And this would be a great job for our members that live in this city. Thank you.
So this is not going to be the only chance. You're going to have to speak on this. You can come back in August, but in the meantime, thank you, and you go to the planning board. Oops, I'm sorry, John.
I'm sorry. So I just wanted to say that I too agree that Chelsea has come a long way. And we're far from the rag shops and the rubber and the plastic and the toxic environment that has been created in the past. So I can appreciate this project and clean energy. And I think we have a lot to learn about it. And I think that, um, you know, I think it's a good thing. And I think it's a good thing in terms of jobs and employment and union workers and across the board in terms of equity and, and the work goes south.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Arthur? Have to worry about it. The next case, so we have some other business, which is 202212B. We'll take two minutes. The one we're going to be hearing is 202212B. 926 Broadway, Juan Diego. For modification, to change the previously approved number of residential units, the proposed modification will include 11 residential units instead of eight residential units. The proposed modification will also reduce the number of parking spaces from eight to So we are here to determine if this is major or minor modification. So I would like you please to talk to me about what you are proposing. And just so you know, in my opinion and looking at it, it's not mine. Just so you know, I just start from that premise, okay? So convince me.
Good evening, everyone. David Midland representing petitioners Evers Bala and Matthew Diego Juan is in Columbia actually participating in a rotary project doing top pallets. No one lets Juan punch a scalpel on that project. He's managing the project and Matthew is joining him in his business. So he's here to learn. I wanted him to speak, but...
We don't bite, generally.
So the main reason we are proposing this, the minor modification, is there's no change to the footprint of the building, there's no change to the height of the building. We're just trying to maximize the space, especially given the housing crisis in Massachusetts and in Chelsea in particular. So the original project has, um, that was the same one. You can see on the roof, there's a head house. And that was the original, the, the original developer was going to do eight condominium units in this building. Four one bedrooms, four two bedrooms with a commercial unit on the ground floor. It's being, uh, two districts. The head house on the roof was going to be just for the use of the condo owners, make it more attractive. There was open space around the head house that you can see. And when Juan and Ever bought the property from the original developer, they looked at it and said, why have all that space up there when we can turn that into two relatively small one-bedroom units? The other thing that they were not happy with, or at least they thought they could improve on with the original plan was the commercial unit on the ground floor. And in that area, I know you're all familiar with it, and it's been kind of difficult to rent out those commercial units in the buildings up there. So the original plan has an accessible unit on the second floor with, I forget what it's called, a luller lift, I believe. It's a small elevator that'll only serve that unit. Instead, they proposed moving the accessible unit to the ground floor, eliminating the commercial unit. So that gives you the one-ground floor residential unit and the two one-bedrooms on the vertical on the roof there. And then they would also be including two additions of the one-accessible unit, two affordable units. And their feeling is that this is all to the benefit of the city and the housing crisis. As of now, they plan to rent out these units and not have them be condos. Again, it's, you know, the usual issues with water and everything else, but it is right on Broadway, right on the bus lines, public transportation readily available. And in my clients' prior projects, they find that a lot of the people who rent the one-bedroom units, many of them work in Boston or work locally, they don't have cars and public transportation is really, really important. And that's it in a nutshell.
Can I, can I talk for, I just want, so I, I'd like your project. I'm not, I don't have my issue about why I think it's major, it's not because of what you're proposing relative to change in use on the bottom or the top. It's the parking. And the parking not, because what we're really, to me, want to reduce to one park, so you're reducing by one parking spot, and then you're adding three more units. So in essence, your project is asking for additional relief than what you had the last time, by a total of five parking spots, which is pretty significant given the number of parking spots that are there. So the only reason that I thought it would be major, and obviously I'm not, you know, I want to hear from you guys, but is because I think that given that change in parking, it seems like it's something that, we always hear about parking in Chelsea, that somebody might want the opportunity to come and talk about, which is the only reason in my mind that I thought it could be major. But, you know, again, I like, I don't have any issues with that being proposed otherwise. It's just, you know, and again, I probably agree with you about the parking and that kind of stuff, all relative to who will use it. But the reality is, is when we give that kind of relief, we generally, we give people the opportunity to talk. So that's, that's the only thought that I had, guys. So, but I'm willing to go in whatever direction you guys feel. If you feel that it's minor, I'm okay with that. But that was just my thought about why I thought that it potentially could be a major project, a major change. But I'm, yeah, but it's not something that came out of...
I agree with the...
So you need three out of five? We need three out of five, so. Again, and I think, you know, this is, this is a board. We all have our opinions. You can change those opinions, you know, you can vote in the direction you think is appropriate, and it won't be an issue.
So we're only going to eliminate one parking space?
We're eliminating one, but when you're adding three more spaces, three more buildings, so the delta is, so now that's, I mean, so the change in parking. So if we had originally, if we had originally made this the 11 spots, then we would have given, probably would have given them approval with that, but they would have asked me for a waiver for five spots, not a waiver for one spot, which is what they, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's just more spots. It's the only, the only reason in my mind that I think somebody might want the opportunity to talk about. Now, was this published, John? Was this named? So, so this wasn't, so I mean, people didn't have the opportunity to know or comment. I'm not sure that they would. Again, it's, it's, they're right, it's Broadway, there's limited parking. I'm arguing both sides of this. The lawyer and me can always argue both sides of this.
So if we vote on it as being major, then we would have to open it to the public?
If we, if we, if we voted on major, then they would have to come and make the proposal again. And they're right.
It was published.
Oh, it was published. Oh, so it, so it was published, so people would have had the opportunity to comment if they felt that there was a change.
Some people get that one.
We had, yeah.
Okay, but I, okay, so if that's, generally wouldn't open it to the public, yeah. But you can give us your name and address.
Okay, my name is, I own 960 Broadway. I'm almost next to the building they want to build. And I think that's not a small project. I think that's a very, very major change that they want to do. And I don't agree, they already had approval for eight, for eight apartments. And the lot is only 48, uh, hundred, uh, four thousand, eight hundred and something feet. And that building would be huge. That's not enough space there. And we have that major, that big problem parking too. So I don't think it's appropriate for them to make three more, three more apartments. That's a major change. Plus they want one less parking. And this, this thinks this project went already through, through the, through the system, which you guys already approved for eight.
Right, and that's why they're asking us, they're, they're making, they're asking us, do we think, we're not saying they can't do their project. What they're saying is we want to make a change, and you have to decide, board, if it's a major change or a minor change. If it's a major change, that doesn't mean they can't do it. That means they have to come back again and have a public hearing process.
But actually, actually, they, this, this, this project should not go forward.
This project, this, this project without the changes they proposed has already been approved.
Correct, for eight.
That's what I said. So if, if this is major, if you believe that it's major, they would have to come back and present the project again as a...
And this is, this is Mr. Saul, he's next to the building, which is not...
Well, he'll have his chance to speak for himself.
Just because the parking situation is going to be more difficult for us, that's what he's saying.
Okay, well, and John just told me that if, even if we vote it's major, we can vote on it tonight. We'd say that it's major, we still can go forward as a motion. So there, so we can have, it's minor, which case it goes on its merry way. If it's major and we have them refiled, or it's major and we can vote on it today with the changes that have been proposed.
I think it's major. I mean, the, Mr. Diego is known in the city to do an excellent work. And I think the idea of increasing it for the residents, especially with the housing need, but I think based on the plan, it is considered major.
Okay, so we've got, to be major, so that means we consider it major. So the question becomes, do we think it's major that it should be read advertised? Or do we think it's major that we're willing to look at, what?
Does it have to be advertised?
No, no, it's, oh, vote. So we could decide what, but then we wouldn't have our information. But then, yeah.
We have our comeback.
So we, so we don't have, they don't have, it's been advertised, so we can say it's major, but then we can approve it and add different conditions if we're so inclined? So...
Would it have to go back to the planning board?
We just said...
No. It could not have to go through major cycling.
And, yeah, I will, well, I will...
I have a question. Which parking space are you going to eliminate?
The reason for eliminating one of the parking spaces is the one closest to what will now be the ground floor accessible unit, because that unit needs additional space for turnarounds and wheelchair access and that type.
So probably they, you know, these three, which one will be?
I'm sorry, I can't see it.
James, but, okay. It's a penny.
That's the new one, yeah? Sorry, my distance glasses were on. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I saw this must be the old one.
Yeah, there, there should be a new one in there also. A new parking, a new ground floor unit. That'll show you the new configuration. I believe the architect kind of reconfigured the rain faucets. It's the longer, that's the longer. So that shows you, on the left side, there are one, two, three, four spaces. And to the right of the drain, the catch basin, are three more spaces. So the floor here...
Somebody else wish to speak on this?
I just wanted to touch on this project. I actually came to the board with this project. I owned it with my family for 15 years, and we ran our plumbing company out of that building. We moved out of there about 10 years ago. Broadway was just crazy busy, so it was smarter for us to get off of Broadway for the plumbing company. I had a hard time renting the commercial space. So when Juan and Ever were going through the plans to redevelop it, it was a really good suggestion for them to change that from commercial to residential for that reason. And plus, it's less parking for, like if you had commercial, you're going to have people coming in and, you know, parking, whatever it is, if it's an office or a retail or whatever it is. So having that one accessible unit on the first floor is going to eliminate a lot of that parking need just from us leaving that space, right? I understand the neighbors' concern with the parking, because like I said, I was there for 15 years. But I think, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, if they do add these units, they're not going to be able to have a parking pass. Right, so it's not like they're going to have additional parking regardless, you know, like by adding those three units. When I came to the board previously, it was a different market. So now we're in a housing crisis and we need units. So where we proposed the roof deck with, you know, a beautiful garden, et cetera, that's not really the need anymore. People need housing here. So I think that's like really their, um, their goal is to provide more housing, make this more accessible, have that unit on the first floor. It's just a better design, and that's coming from me who designed it before. So they really did a great job with this, and I understand the parking, but I also, because I also live in Chelsea, I live right up the street, so, but they're not going to get a parking pass regardless. So it's not like we're going to, you know, infiltrate all these new cars. They're, if they have a unit and they don't have a parking spot, they're not getting a pass. So I just feel like it's a, it's a good, they didn't change the height, they didn't change the square footage. Nothing about the project in its entirety has changed other than utilizing the space better. So I just wanted to voice, like, I know the project very well, so I just wanted to give you guys my opinion on it and as a Chelsea resident as well, and just knowing the demand for the housing, so, thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak?
Actually, um, just to, no parking. How can 12 units, the rest of the people who park on the street? We already have a problem parking around there. And I lived there for 24 years. I think we... I think we've been living there for ten years. And Mr. Bosser, that is over there, he owns the next house. We didn't have a problem with parking right there. And to add three more units, it's gonna get worse. I know that you already agreed on eight, and made a apartment, and I think that's fair, not to continue with more. And what they said, that we need more, more living spaces around it. Yeah, we do, but not, what about the parking? Where we gonna put the parking? Twelve units, at least if they leave one person in each unit, is twelve cars.
Eleven.
Okay, eleven units, eleven cars. One person. The most, most of the people, they live in one apartment, they got at least two or three cars. So imagine what the impact is gonna be around? Well, that's all I have to say.
So, just to, to add to what Nicole said, saying the same thing, actually, is, if these are going to be rental units, or, or if they're gonna be condos, but they are, at least at this point, intended to be rental units, people who need, who have cars are not going to rent them, because, as Nicole said, they won't be able to park anywhere.
Are the other apartments, the A apartments already rented right now? Or is any empty?
It's not built yet, but it's intended to be. Originally, I believe the dungeons intended for it to be condos.
They'll rent them.
Oh, it's gonna be rentals then too, but now it's definitely intended.
If you eliminate one parking spot, why would go there?
Part of the accessible unit, because of the space needed for the, for the turnarounds inside the unit.
Joan, how many, how many parking spaces are going to be required? I just wanna be clear that we're, what?
I think I got seventeen, but I'm always on.
Seventeen.
So you're looking for, you're looking for a lead for ten spots, ten spaces? I mean, I really like the idea, and I think it makes perfect sense to have the first floor not be commercial and be a, the handicapped access, that makes sense. And then, so, I mean, at a minimum, I, I think adding one more space, personally, again, just to make sense. I don't think there's any, I think you're right, you made it, it's done, you made it a point, that if it's commercial, you're gonna probably have more traffic. And I think it makes more sense to have an accessible unit on the first floor, for, for lots of reasons. So I have, I, you know, that's my, I mean, I think it's major, but I also think it's something that I like, I like somebody proposing, so, what do people think?
I think I concur with you. It is major, but at the same time, it's beneficial to the community, and therefore, I feel I can vote on it.
Do we have any others who feel that way, or do they feel that they would need more time, or it should be open to another?
I too agree.
You agree?
But I think the housing crisis over receives the parking, and I think that it's smart to convert that space, as you said, into a livable space, as opposed to commercial, and the coming and going would be much more as a commercial space. And I think that the parking crisis already exists, and so when you weigh the two, I think that housing is, is a priority. So it's kind of not convenient.
I think it's major.
But, yeah, I think we'll agree it's major, but the question is, do we think, are you comfortable having, voting on it tonight? And saying it's major?
You can't, you can't extend it, right? You can't, you can, and open it, but like, but we've already advertised it.
Yeah, I mean, it's already been advertised.
Where we wanted to speak is here.
Right, so that's why I wanted to make sure if it's been advertised. So I, I feel like if it's been advertised, then I feel comfortable making this check. If it hadn't been advertised, I would not have felt as comfortable.
I mean, you know, parking is an issue everywhere across the city. I know that there's a high demand for, for apartments.
You go, what are your thoughts?
I read that it is a major, but we don't have to make a decision today? We're not ready to make a decision?
You're ready to make a decision? Okay, then let's make a decision. Do we have a motion? We have, first of all, do we have to make a motion first that's major? So do I have a motion that it's a major change? Joan made, okay, Joan made, seconded by Merrill. Oh, sometimes it's easier to do that. And so now, is there anybody who proposes to, to approve this with the earlier determined conditions? Do we have a promote, both on that? We could provoke, we could approve, vote to approve this change with imposing the conditions that we have proposed when we originally approved. Yes, do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second on that? Second, Joe, all in favor?
So it doesn't matter what the public, if people are living around, if you guys.
We have, we, we listen to, so, yeah.
Still approve it, which is, I don't think is right. I don't think it's right enough. We lived there, we lived there for a long time, you know, the draw, so on. If you guys approve of this, it's more money.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I might.
But it's, it's, it's over. I mean, we have the opportunity.
I know it's over, but, you know, it would be nice for people to really consider the people that live there also. You know, because it's not fair, it's not fair that we have to suffer, you know, all this other stuff, when people don't live around there, and they don't see it every day. I know you don't see it every day there, but it's very difficult, you know? And it's hard when people have to come from work, wait thirty minutes for a parking space, and then on top of that, there's construction. Things happen every day, but it's really, it should be considered more for the people that live around there. And I know that a lot of people don't know about meetings like this, even though it's been advertised. So just to, you know, I know it doesn't mean anything now, but it would be really nice for people to consider the people that live there, for the next time, I guess.
The next case is 2022-29, Roseanne Bon Giovanni, Green Roots, modification to allow the use of kitchen space approved, done by third party. Joan, is this also advertised?
It was not.
This was not advertised. I think this is. Okay, so, hello, Ms. Giovanni, how are you? So for you, we have to decide if it's major or minor.
Okay.
If we believe it's major, then this, we cannot vote on this statement, because it would have to be read advertised, because it's not been advertised. So if we decide that it's major, and just so you know, my opinion is, I think it's a tough, so.
Do you think what?
It's major. Because I think, well, tell us what you're proposing. You're proposing a change, and what, what's the equivalent?
Yeah, so basically, we have.
Safety for the record.
Sure. So Roseanne Bon Giovanni, Green Roots, ninety Everout, Suite Ten, House. So what I'm asking for, my consideration of, is to use the inner space of the teaching kitchen in a slightly different way than what I think you all have previously approved. There'll be no changes to the footprint, or to the building, or to parking at all. What we have been asked to do since we've opened the kitchen, is a lot of folks have, a lot of organizations have come to use the space, or have asked to use the space. One of, I'll give you a few examples of what has been, what folks have asked to use a kitchen for, and we've said, we have to double-check and get permission first. So one of the proposed uses or requests was from the Veteran Services Department of the City of Chelsea. They put together boxes of food for their veterans, and then they distribute them to the veterans in the city. They don't have a space, I, I don't know where they're doing this right now, but they've, they've seen the kitchen, and said it's a good-sized space to bring in all of what they're getting for food, and then they would collate the boxes there, and then take them off-site, or bags, and bring them to their clients. That was one use that we were requesting. Another was a company, a worker-owned co-op that makes juices, so they, they just, they do this elsewhere right now, but what they'd like to do is have a bigger space to be able to prepare their juices, and put them in, like, mason jars, and then they bring them to their facility in East Boston. Those are two examples, but there have been, yeah, those are probably the two that are most, sort of, significant, or have, have given us pause to say, we, we can't do that, or we don't know yet if we can do that. So that's when we reached out to Joan.
I, I would think, my opinion, that the, which, the collation of the food, probably a minor kind of situation, 'cause there's not food preparation. I just am concerned when there's food preparation, which, for, for a third-party vendor.
Yep.
And that's the only reason that I think in summertime, you got, you now sort of made it a commercial, and it's a commercial use, because, you know, 'cause that could open, you could open it up to other vendors who wanna use your space. And then maybe it's a proper, I'm not saying it's, again, I'm not disagreeing with what you're proposing for the use.
Yep.
I'm, I'm feeling as though it's quite different from what you originally proposed.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand, and I, I hear you. I, I do want to let you know that it isn't the primary use of the kitchen, that's not how we really use the kitchen. Kitchen has regular programming, classes that go on, on a weekly basis, and then there are consistent times during the week, and then there'll be special events on, you know, predefined days. So the majority of the programming at the teaching kitchen is exactly as intended. It's these one-offs, that are like, one, one day a month, one day every few weeks.
But you can also propose, you know, when you make a proposal, you can say, we wanna be, we wanna be able to use the, the teaching, the cooking facility X number of days for...
Oh, right, no, we're, no, we're saying that. So we're, for us.
No, I mean, I mean, that would be, that would be, so that you wouldn't have to come for every one-off. If what you said was, we wanna propose this, and we wanna be able to use it for once, once a month, twice a month, whatever it is, for specific vendors that, you know, that are just small vendors or whatever, then, I mean, that's something we might wanna consider, without you having to come every time one individual wants to use the facility. But that, that's, so, I mean, I, I, first of all, let me applaud the fact that you followed the rules. I just wanna say, that's so very, very pleasant. So I don't want, and I don't wanna discourage that, but that, and I, and I, I don't, I think it's nice when it's being proposed, and I think if Green Roots can somehow get support for the community and make a few bucks at the same time, I think that's not a bad thing at all. It's just a matter of whether or not.
Right.
There should be, you know, we, there are questions that I'd wanna know, like, how often will they come? What are their trucks? What, you know, who's gonna, you know, what kind of trucks are they gonna pick their mason jars up in, in this case? You know, or, or where are they gonna park? You know, there's just a lot of, for me, some questions that others who may have the right to comment on.
Yep.
That's, that's my thought, that's, that's, I mean, I like, I don't have a, I don't have a, any kind of big issue about, that, I mean, I don't wanna say that I'm totally through it, 'cause I would wanna know what, how you would want to generically bottle up what you're proposing, you know, for the use, but it, I don't think it's a, it's not a, it's not an inconsistent use per se, but it is a commercial kitchen, which was not, you're proposing a commercial kitchen, which was not what we consider.
Yes, but, so the yes, but is that they're not, they wouldn't be cooking in a way like they cater as a commercial cooking.
But they're still cooking there, they're, they're still cooking for, there's somebody coming in as a third party who's not, who's not connected, who's not connected to Green Roots, who is going to use this as a commercial kitchen, 'cause it's viable for them, and it makes sense. And it's viable for you guys, because it makes sense. You have this lovely facility, and it should be being used, but it's, it isn't something, it's not like you're saying, we're the Green Roots people, we're gonna have our people come in, and we're going to teach them how to make smoothies, and then we're gonna sell those foods. That's, you know, that's like, okay, that's, that's a Green Roots enterprise, but you're proposing something that's not a Green Roots enterprise. That's, that's my own thought.
And I think as the, you've got an excellent reputation, what you've done over the years, the thirty years, but I think as people find out, oh, I did this at Green Roots, let's go down. And the, the announcement or the advertisement indirectly, I think, could generate a lot more. And so I have to agree with the chairman, that I think it's, it's not a major.
And again, if it had been advertised, I would, we would probably have a similar discussion to what we had for the last case, but because people did have the opportunity to come and come, and in this case, they'll haven't had the opportunity.
And I think it's great, because I think that it creates a lot of support for entrepreneurship and businesses, and small businesses in Chelsea. And if it's a matter of rewriting that use of space, then encourage you to do so, because I think that however you use it to the best of its ability, I think it helps the community, and I think it's such a beautiful space that it needs to be expanded to promote entrepreneurship and small business and growth within the community.
And also, quite honestly, you know, giving revenue to Green Roots helps create other opportunities in the community.
Absolutely.
So even if this isn't a community-based juice maker, but it provides resources to Green Roots, which they then in turn use to support the community. You know, there's, there's different ways to look at it, and clearly, whenever we, any kind of revenue Green Roots gets, they're gonna use it to support, by definition, their mission, so, but that's, that's, that's my own idea.
Is there any short-term in this, or long-term?
Yeah, so the, the Veterans Association, I don't have a clear plan. They had reached out, they were interested, and we said we weren't sure, we were circling back, so I don't know what their, what their plan is. So the folks with the Juicers, they have a company in East Boston, it's a worker-owned co-op, and they don't have a big enough space, and so they thought, they asked if they could, like, use the space for once a month for the next year until, maybe a year, until they got their own kitchen. They're, they're working on trying to acquire a building for all of their cooperative, this is an organization that has, like, worker-owned cleaning company, a worker-owned juicing company, a worker-owned sewing company, and so they're trying to find a building that could house all of their operations, and so they knew that they asked those to use the kitchen.
I think there are two pieces here, I'll just ask you, Joan, because I think the issue, we could separate them, I mean, I think if the issue related to the veterans could be considered easily minor, and, and I would be willing to talk about that as being a minor, so you could begin that, and continue to be supportive of the community in that way, by saying, sure, let the veterans come in, pull together their, their packages, their food packages. I think that's minor, because there's not food production going on. So, but I think, so if you're willing to think about them, or if we're willing to think about them as two separate issues, the minor relative to the veterans, 'cause, you know, the consolidation of food, when there's no actual food processing on board, then, then, then I think that's, I think that's, and I think we can even probably, you know, be generic about that, and not say it's about the veterans, and say, if, if, you know, there's community groups that want to come together and use this as a resource for packaging up things that we're not, they're not, I'm, I'm okay. So do we, so do we, can we, so we can, can we, so I'm gonna, so I suggest that we parse it out, that when it comes to the non, non-manufacture, whatever the right word is, production of food, that what you're proposing makes sense, as a consolidation point, that is totally in keeping with what Green Roots is about. It's, you know, helping the community, and in this case, it happens to be about packaging food, it can be about collecting diapers, it can be any, I don't see, those are any different, to be honest. Like, you could collect diapers, you could collect whatever, those are things that support the community, and are going to have a potential physical, potential health impact. So shall we, so we, can we do that? Do we, do we have a recommendation that relative to the non-production of food, we consider this a minor modification?
Yes.
Do I have a motion on that?
Do we have to, do we, a minor first?
That's the minor, so let's look at the minors. Do we consider that part minor?
Yes.
Do we consider, so, do I, so Merrill made a motion, it was seconded by you, go, so we agree that that part of what you're proposing is minor.
Correct.
Now, the food production part, we think we should, we think the public should get to comment on that? So do we have a motion to say that the food production portion of this request is major?
Yes.
Joe, second, I think Joan, all in favor?
Can I just ask guidance? So I will come back in a month, yes, in June?
Yeah, then we would have to advertise it as a public hearing, and then you'll come and, and the June meeting, which is, okay. To eleven.
Eleven.
I just, I would just, do you want you to feel as though you could do that easier part?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just, and when I come back, do I need to submit a new written request?
Yes.
So something different than what I had already signed? And then, do you need to know, like, everybody who's asked?
You should try to think of a generic, you should look at what's there, and tie, tie a package that generically, that in a way that makes sense.
Okay.
That we could consider, and then go back and forth. I personally would not limit it to just one particular vendor, because then that vendor changes their name, or it becomes somebody else, and you're having the same thing. It's just a matter of ensuring that it's not being used as a perpetual.
If you think of all the possibilities of what you have, and what might be, and then just in broad terms...
just in broad terms describe.
Because I have an audience with you now, can I ask one more? Two more questions, that was a question. So all of our classes right now were free, anything that we offer to the community is free. We have thought about potentially charging for some events, when we have like big guests, chefs coming in, we might charge ten bucks, or fifteen dollars for a ticket. Does that have to come also in front of you? And if so, is that? I think so.
Look, it's, it's still the same type of activity that you're doing before, except instead of being free, there's a minor charge.
And we didn't, we were silent on that.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm asking all the right questions.
And there might be something, you know, from, when you, when I'm trying to think about this generic point of view, like, you might, you might, you might think about it, John, it might be too generic to say it, is, you know, you can, if, say you say, we want commercial vendors, X, Y, and Z, then potentially what we could do is require you anytime it's a change, then, I don't want to put that on you guys that will come to you and do consider this particular vendor different than what we approved. You know what I mean, like, they could just, you know, okay, we, we agreed to X, Y, Z, and now ABC wants to come in, and rather than come to us, to the board to get approval, we could put something generically in their permit that says, you can talk to John about ABC. You know what I mean?
Yes.
You know what, you know what I'm trying to say? Yes.
Say, we're going to have to define the type of usage that they're going to permit, and, and then if there's any change on that, then they'll be willing to come for that.
So define the type of usage, but not necessarily if they use it.
Yep.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all, for vacation. By the last one. I know, did the city want to talk? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Nice to see you. I love it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Hugo, and we're all out of here.
Thank you.
Eight sixteen.